Which is being spent through the private sector. Some of it will, and some of it will always be, continue to be home, to be paid through the private sector. But many of it is not a good provision at all. We believe that we need to reverse the problems of the Blair years, when this council, like every other council, was forced through a so-called best value regime to transfer effectively its services to the private sector. That's what we need to do. Look at Green Day services back in house. And lastly, my Lord Mayor, just to look at the appalling system by which we collect money. We believe, as a party, and I think most people over there believe as well, that the biggest amounts of tax should be paid by those with the broader shoulders with the biggest incomes. But that's not what happens under a property-based system. The current rental levels on which the council tax bandings are based were set in 1991, levels in 1993. They were supposed to be upgraded to 1998 levels in the year 2000. As I've remarked before, and I will be finishing on time, as we have remarked before, fifteen percent of the reported people exist as a built-up environment, particularly on the river, when those rent levels were set. We need to revise the system, and we need to have a fair system, such as the EU rules, to redistribute money. My Lord Mayor, I'll close on this note. At the last meeting, a Labour councillor told us how angry she was, that we were spending time looking at £100,000 how £100,000 was going to be spent. Well, the problem in Liverpool, my Lord Mayor, is they didn't listen to my old mum. My old mum used to say, 'Look after the pennies, and the pounds will look after themselves.' The trouble has been in Liverpool for more than a decade, that no one looked at the penny or pounds, and that's why we're in the mess we are today, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Maykinson.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I'm seconding this addendum, and I'm voting against a budget resolution, because frankly, I have no confidence in the ability of this Labour administration to spend properly or on the right priorities. For instance, we have a capital programme that pours even more into city centre roads, while continuing to underfund road safety schemes in the rest of the city. Just in my ward, there are two dangerous junctions, on Melham Avenue and Ladd Avenue, where a child was hit last month. We're told that fixing these junctions will cost £1.5 million each, and they're at the top of the council's priority list. They've been at the top of that priority list for the past six years. My constituents are already appalled that £70 million has been spent on the Strand and Lion Street, but they will be dismayed to see a further £6 million is being committed to put the throne at the Strand over the next two years, while schoolchildren and residents take their lives in their hands. We're not convinced by the Green Day savings assumptions. At the Finance and Resources Committee, both in October and last week, I asked what allowance could be made for increased costs of removing flight attendants and the payment leaves that residents will stop collecting. How much extra we will end up paying in penalties if we fail to reach the 51% recycling target in 2025? The answer I received in October and again last week was, 'We will send you that information', while I'm still waiting. And we're expected to vote for a budget without knowing consequences, just as members opposite last year voted for one-stop-shop closures, only to be shocked later on to discover that they'd voted to close facilities in their own ward. We continue to support the administration in demanding more resources for our city from central government. But that job is made much harder when we go to government asking for £1,004 million to tackle homelessness, and then months later decide to give it back to this government. My Lord Mayor, whether you're a household or a council, it's always a good idea to have something set aside for a rainy day. But at a time when our residents are having to choose between heating and eating, I doubt many households will be doubling their own savings accounts. Yet we're being asked to make people pay more council tax, not to protect services, but to put an extra £20 million in the council's piggy bank, £10 million this year. Why is this happening? Well, the SIFRA review highlights the brutal assessment of the authority's financial management. The city is worse at collecting its debts than other core cities. We are continuing to be fleeced by private sector children's homes charging us more than a quarter of a million pounds per child. SIFRA have told officers to double the reserves, largely because they do not have confidence in this Labour administration's financial management. My Lord Mayor, people are struggling with rising food and fuel bills. I cannot look my constituents in the eye and tell them they are receiving value for money for council tax they are already paying. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I've got a list of five councillors who want to speak, so I'll start with councillor Mombi.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I always enjoy listening to councillor Kemp or chatting with Tinty Stewart, as a man with no shame. As he's an elder member of the council like me, I clearly make this sound to my knees, but I'm not, so I want to take it back a bit to the past. Richard, you did not condemn the Tory Lib Dem cuts. You defended them. Section 106, you referred to. Now, I know councillor Hattie will recall how I worked with him and councillor Robertson Collins, when I took her responsibility for that. And we found that under the previous Lib Dem administration, there was no mechanism in place, no officers responsible for collecting section 106. And there was £10 to £15 million uncollected data from the Lib Dem crack-up administration, several of which we could never get back because of the time it's elapsed. Because of the measures we put in place and the officers we recruited, that has reduced substantially. So how dare you enter section 106 to help me fix that problem? Then we got under homes for a pound and sites for a pound. Now, that is utterly shameless. Look at a housing market with your scheme. Councillor Kemp and his party handed over to developers with no overage clause, with no clawback clause, thousands of sites in the city, thousands of sites, and we got no money back from it. Leasins in my own ward, they built hundreds of thousands of properties, which they made money off, we made no money on that. We got nothing for the land, nothing for the scheme. We were left in fast deserts in parts of Everton and Anfield, where nothing happened. Labour got houses built on that to get in council tax. So the argument that we will improve is a nonsense, compared to what your lot were like. I won't go into Scam with Right and Windsor Development, which is absolutely disgusting, derelict for years, or Bad George Street, which you gave to Urban Square with no overage clause, with no clawback, which is responsible for Big Digger. Shame on you, shame on you. How dare you attack us for that? Finally, when you talk about privatization outsourcing, I was there when you outsourced tens of millions of pounds in services which cost us money. I'm proud of the role that other councils played, although councillor Hattie and councillor McRae dollars in bringing back services in environmental sector, which saves us millions of pounds. The reason we've used money to the private sector in adding children's social care is because your party privatized it. So how dare you attack Labour for that? We're trying to fix some of the mess you left us. You had a period in power when there were hundreds of millions of pounds thrown into the city from a Labour government. We've had a situation where there's hundreds of millions of pounds thrown out of this city, thanks to your party and its Tory powers. So of course, there's always the state administrations, right? Nobody can accuse me of having been an uncritical fan of the previous men. You know, that's not exactly a secret. But for the Lib Dems to give us lectures in fiscal prudence is the most disgraceful dishonesty I've ever heard in this chamber, twelve people in that honour.
Councillor Clonan?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Notwithstanding annual budget cuts, which would also have happened under a Labour government post-2010, this council is plagued by inefficiency, mismanagement and waste, whether it's simple things like filling a pothole again and again and again, or perhaps the £1.5 million and rising overspend on Lion Street, or even the letting off of developers of promised section 106 money, money earmarked for the communities we all serve. The final insult, Lord Mayor, is the many hundreds of thousands of pounds the people of Liverpool are paying the commissioners trying to remedy your incompetence, your inability to lead, and your corrupt practices as highlighted by the Callaghan Report. A shameful record of being in power for 12 years, 12 years airbrushed from history. Even when this Labour administration was offered money by the governments, like the £4 million towards a new homeless shelter, you failed to deliver and sent it back. You couldn't make it work. So what's the big budget-balancing brainwave from an administration window has wasted more than £130 million? The geniuses, this one here, who run our city, have come up with, wait for it, a green bin tax. Even with 100% take-up, it will claw back just £1.7 million. When I raised this issue with the Neighbourhood Committee on the 17th of November, I was told that although it was a contentious issue, and you can say that again, contentious all right, it couldn't be discussed at that meeting as it was a budget proposal out for consultation, and my party would get its chance at a later date. Well, I guess that time is now. So here are the results of our consultation with residents. They'll be interested in this. Less than one in five said they would pay, less than one in five. More than 40% said they'd put scot used in their green bin and put more in their purple bin. So if it's less than 20% paying, this service will be unviable. Perhaps that's Labour's intention. If 42% put green waste in their purple bin, this will ramp up the amount the council pays in landfill charges and do little to improve the already embarrassing recycling rate of 26%. This policy will not work and sends out entirely the wrong message about the environmental attitude of the council, particularly after unanimously declaring a climate emergency almost three years ago. What we need is a forward-thinking, clear plan to address this issue, not a nil-judge scheme like the cost money, not save it. Lord Mayor, history shows that whenever the Labour Party runs this city for an extended time, it brings it to its knees. Next year, the people of Liverpool will have an opportunity to show what they think of Labour's record over the last 12 years, including 10 years with an all-powerful elected mayor forced upon us. I'm confident that this undemocratic and dangerous experiment will soon be rejected by the people of Liverpool. I'm also confident that they won't forgive the incompetence or forget the shameful practices which have dogged this Labour council and embarrassed our city so much as a result. Finally, Lord Mayor, the reality is that only the Liverpool Democrats, as we did so effectively before, can restore, can restore the council's reputation, responsibly manage the finances of this city, address the huge challenges we face in the future, and ensure best value, best value for the council tax base of Liverpool. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Councillor Brown?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I actually hadn't planned, oh, which councillor? Okay, do you want to begin there? I hadn't, I hadn't actually planned pretty much in this debate, but I think I'm going to try and come at this in a neutral way. Doing Gary. I'm trying to look at this, I suppose, in a neutral sense and possibly just turn it back to the addendum, because it is an addendum rather than an amendment, I suppose, to the budget. And just looking at particular lines, there's a particular line in there in terms of it believes that the value of having independent members as part of our audit committee process. And I can say that I think that that has worked rather well in terms of making sure that we are asking the correct decisions and rights, and we've got good experience there in our independent members who are offering some real value as part of that. So I guess my plea to the council in a neutral way is if you're not going to accept the overall addendum to this budget from the Liverpool Democrat group, that you might actually consider that particular paragraph as actually being something of good value. I think in terms of, if we think about improvement of that, this has been something that has actually provided some good value to the council, and that's something that we might actually consider it to be a very small part of the budget, just for expenses purposes for our independent members. I think that's something that we're possibly looking to. So thanks for that.
Councillor Rufford?
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Have to say, I certainly am overwhelmed by the Liverpool Democrat budget. It doesn't amend anything that we were told about the stories of all our yesterdays. So can we actually focus back onto the actual budgets before this? Page 251, I do share some concerns expressed. In this report, it says we've got to achieve a 55% recycling rate by 2025. And it's also suggesting that we're currently delivering 31% on recycling. What I cannot comprehend is if we charge for green bins, have, without doubt, some of Houston's green bins of recycling material have been put into the herbal bins or into the blue bins, or trashed on the streets, how that will achieve the 20% shortfall we already knows there? It just doesn't make common sense. And I know when in Venice, councillor Gordon met ourselves and we discussed quite a few issues about dairy houses and land property values. And I appreciate that dialogue. But we have been asking, my God, Jerry Donner has been asking, how are we going to achieve that improvement? I'm going to be honest, we hear about the mayor of Triple Lock. Well, I'm going to say, when it's been coming to delivering local service, it's the mayor of Triple Letdown. We've had communal bins schemes, which have had a proven benefit of improving recycling rates by 28%. And okay, that alone, you have to, it's not already in the scheme. All Lady that scheme is in some parts of my ward and our neighbour in Anfield, a year or two years behind schedule. If we wanted to achieve the improvement in recycling rates, then we would be putting on a communal bins scheme to help deliver recycling, not charging for bins. And we're told a lot about the benefit of the commissioners. Well, you know, I'm going to be honest, that was a good point about the proposition, but we accept it the way we're at. But I have to say, we're talking about the benefit to social inclusion and employment of local people. Well, I can tell you, in my correspondence to the Labour offices department, I endlessly complain that local builders who are developing small sites, the council said were not housing viable, are having transactions held up or not progressed. That is absolutely disastrous to local employment of local builders. It's also disastrous because those small dairy sites are the sites in which people dump in, where we have to clean up. And those sites are used for arson and crime that affects the neighbours around them. And fast from progress being made, things have got worse. The council's response to developments of small dairy sites is borne into paralysis. Our commissioners have not added value to the process, but have added paralyses to the process. And that's the way I see it. We're told about the environment. Yeah, we've got to bring on the environment, you know. I won't say anything about how wonderful West Derby congestion scheme did raise the benefits of air pollution. But I have one young lad in our ward who lost his grandparents due to Covid. And over nine months ago, he wrote to council officers with my support, saying, 'Black Park planted a tree in the local park for the memorial of a family.' We have written to council officers six times about planting trees. The council has got money set aside for a dynamic 28 trees in Ushun Park. That's a real dynamic benefit. And we're still hoping one year later, I'm a family car pulling a memorial tree in Ushun Park nine months later. The mayor of Triple Lock has a triple letdown, and this budget is two.
Councillor Gibbons?
Thanks, my Lord Mayor. I mean, I'll give councillor Clonan one bit of praise, and that he's all entertaining, in the way Mr Bean's entertaining. I mean, obviously, God, what, what an absolute kerfuffle that is. How dare you talk about the credit that the Lib Dems have given this city when they were once judged the worst council in Britain? The Hudson have acted the years of austerity to be able to say, 'Oh, it's just a passing fancy.' Year after year, they've ground people in this city into the dust. You take responsibility for that. And this really is rich. When you turn on the sarcasm and some of the comments you made in the past about female members, I just think you ought to look at yourself in the mirror. Now, let's get one thing straight, I'm going to talk about the budget. The measures in this budget are not savings, they are cuts. Cuts which in the last 12 years, if they've taught us anything, cost us more very often than they save us in the long term. And why are we facing these painful cuts? I'll come back to the Lib Dems. We're here because of Tory austerity, propped up and facilitated during the coalition by the Lib Dems. Apologize for it now, and never forget at the time we didn't apologize for it. The cynicism of the U-turn on tuition fees still lives us politically in this country. The Tories have told, I don't know support for Tommy Blay, if you know that. The Tories have torn £465 million out of our city. That's where the main blame lies, on a government that wasted £37 billion on a failed test and trace plan, £9 billion on useless PE, £4.3 billion writing off Covid corruption fraud losses. Much of this money went to the ever-up more of Tory donors. And that said, throwing up our hands and saying there's nothing we can do will never be good enough. There are always things we can do. Alternative proposals were put forward during the consultation. One by one, they were rejected out of hand. The budget is essentially unchanged since the start of the consultation process. At the same time, commissioners have had their mouths stuffed with silver with a 50% back-dated pay rise. But we're told that the commissioners and the audit body SIFRA wouldn't accept the proposed alternatives. We were wedged into a fiscal straitjacket. We're told that reserves have to rise 50% from £20.7 million to £30.7 million. This is SIFRA advice. It is not an order, it's not an instruction, it's not something that's inevitable, and there are other authorities with larger populations that are running lower reserves. We can make political decisions. We can afford a portion of the reserves that we can use when need is most pressing. We can do things differently. We're told it has to be this way because of exceptional circumstances, like emerging from Covid. I'll tell you what, since the Tories' Thatcher and the crashes of the past, when did we ever not have exceptional circumstances in the country? Look what we have been through in a rollercoaster of austerity and attacks on the working class. Isn't the need for adult or children's social care and disability a network of libraries in North Liverpool? Aren't these things that we need to defend always as exceptional circumstances? And this situation is not going away. Now, the law, if you're talking of the livelihoods, Jane, I can see you looking at me. We asked, and Tom Crone put the question, is it going to be subject year on year to competitive tendering process? And Harry Don said yes, said yes. So you, well, that, it's limited in the Finance Select Committee. Anybody who's here at the finance Joint Select Committee, that's what was said. And Tom knows it, he's sitting right in front of me. This situation is not going away. If we don't find an alternative, we'll be implementing Tory cuts year after year. The numbers are going up, we have to have a different approach. Liverpool's communities are at breaking point. As a matter of conscience, I'm not prepared to vote for cuts that'll make life harder for the people I represent. And for that reason, I and others are going to vote against this budget.
Councillor Barrenton?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. When the Lib Dems ran the city in 2008, the Lib Dem council was rated the worst local council in the country due to the Lib Dems having little tax base money. Thanks to the Labour government, the Lib Dem council had multiple to spend each year. In 2010, this council had £465 million more than we have today. The Labour government gave millions of pounds to our city for building schools for the future. Then, when the Lib Dems got elected into government with the Tories, they scrapped that fund. £350 million scrapped. It was this Labour council that built new schools across the city. Councillor Kemp was responsible for the group's success. The Lib Dem leader, Warren Bradley, said that the Lib Dems had ripped the heart out of the Liverpool communities. It was this Labour council that picked up the mess that the Lib Dems left and revitalized that community. So we don't need any lectures from the Lib Dems.
Councillor Deere?
Yes, Lord Mayor. I really can't, I was going to get up and attack a bit of the Lib Dems history, but unfortunately, after hearing what I've heard from councillor Mombi and councillor Barrenton, I think I've got nothing else to say, really. All I'm going to say is I remember from 10 years ago when I became a councillor at Pictet Ward, when councillors, the previous councillors deserted Pictet Ward and deserted it in a state that, right now, you walk down the street and we're still picking up the speeches that they lectured. You look at the demolition, you look at the houses in that area, and we've tried our best to bring it back, bring it back for residents who now are creating families. We're on the quash of their own work with the coalition. We won't be, we wouldn't have been in this had it not been for them. We are picking up the pieces of this £24 million, trying to find it. It's not easy. There's no easy decisions, and especially not the ones that are written in the back of a few papers and they tell us this is going to change and will improve people's lives in Liverpool. It will not. I think I've got, I had more challenge going around the city during the consultation by young people, by residents, than I've had from experienced, so-called experienced politicians on the other side. I've had more inspiration, and hence why, talking about the green bin, we went back to the drawing board and we made sure that we are going to protect the most needed and those who cannot afford it. Figures are being thrown of how can it bear... Figures are being thrown of how can it be and what happens and so on and so forth by councillors that, really, all they need to do is do a bit of searching, looking at local and authorities close by and see how over 150 English authorities have introduced and how successful or unsuccessful they have been. So for them to stand up and say that, well, it will be a failure, well, it won't be a failure in, well, just go down there, St Helen's. Our proposals are based on 33% uptake. That's, we need in 45,000 houses to take up this service and the other for us to be that 1.7. Now, it's your job, if you truly want this to succeed and have enough money in there to encourage people to take up, those who can afford it. You said should shoulder the most amount. Well, let's see what, if you believe in that and see what you can do in your own communities. I'd like to say, you know, a big thank you to every person who's really truly engaged in our consultation, to the trade unions, to our members, to our party who've been really behind us all the way and challenging us. And before you, we are going to be presented, there's the only option. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wards. I will not stifle debate in any way. I would ask you to stick to the points that you're making, try not to repeat what's just been said and move forward. I've got four more speakers down. So councillor Conception?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to speak against the amendment. councillor Kemp started his discussion, his debate to the chamber tonight. And he said, "How have we arrived at this situation?" And I'd just like to point out to councillor Kemp, we've arrived at this situation because of him and his party. We've joined the Tories in 2010 and introduced austerity to this country the likes that we've never seen in memory. It's been estimated that if Liverpool would have had the average cut of other cities in the UK, we would have had £80 million more to spend each year. If you had that up 80 million over five years, we would have had the other £400 million to spend. So really, when the Liberal Democrats were in coalition with the Tories and Danny Alexander was Osborne's first heir and now, we suffered the waste cuts, you know, this country's seen. And we've suffered ever since then. councillor Carr mentioned, and others mentioned, section 106, that we give way to developers and we just let them get away with what they want. Well, that isn't the case. We have a robust system in this city that's based on the government guidelines that we need to adhere to. And we have an independent consultant who advises us accordingly. And no section 106 money has been written off. And we still continue to pursue that. And we will continue to pursue that. This budget, about being a councillor since 2010, but I was also a councillor from, in the 90s. And it's always been a problem. In Liverpool, we have never had a Labour council with a Labour Government. But that party has, and they squandered the money. And they're seeing as councillor Barrington, which was saying, "The low star statement we wear under the Lib Dems, we should hang that head in shade." You know. In relation to the green bin, it's something that we wouldn't want to do. But obviously, we're faced with really difficult decisions. What are the alternatives? Shut our children's senses, our leisure senses? Throw our staff on the dole? We're not prepared to do that. We are not going to play politics with people's lives and the services that we provide to the most vulnerable people in our city. Vote against the amendments and vote for the budget here moved by the mayor. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Doyle, then councillor Simon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's been lots of points made this evening, but I think there's some figures that need to be brought to attention. To councillor Kemp and councillor Klein and his colleagues, do you know how many Lib Dem-controlled councils there are? 27. Do you know how many of those 27 charge for waste collection? 22. Do you know what the average yearly subscription costs are in those 22 councils? £50. Do you know how many of those 22 councils provide a discount for their most vulnerable? Perhaps a discount like we are, which would be £5 for eight months or even under the support scheme, they wouldn't have to pay. Do you know how many? Five. And not a very generous discount either. And also to other colleagues in the room, I want to make it very clear that voting against this budget is voting against supporting the Liverpool SIS support scheme. Voting against this budget is voting against M&amp;F. Voting against this budget is voting against supporting leisure's library centres staying open. A vote against this budget is reckless. A vote against this budget puts jobs, council jobs, in danger. Your communities did not vote you in on those platforms.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A lot of points that I've seen have already been made in respect of some of the myths and legends that go around about budgets. I think what we'd all accept, that is in the amendment, is that the funding formula for local government is flawed and has been for many years. And councils like Liverpool that have a low council tax and business tax base suffer from that. Let's be clear, and some of the comments in here I found really insulting to our hard-working staff who are working harder than ever under the most difficult circumstances, who rose last year and the year before during a pandemic in some of the worst conditions, who put their own lives and now their families at risk to serve this city. And I know it doesn't criticise our staff directly. When you talk about inefficiencies and things not happening, they are our staff. We've worked closely with the trade unions over the years to make sure that we try and maintain our staff levels. And some of the reasons for those inefficiencies, and it's always hurt me when people talk about backroom staff, but I know backroom staff. Every member of staff in this council plays a role. And by then, doing some of those roles allows our frontline staff and services to be out there doing what they do best, not sat in an office doing administrative tasks that can be done elsewhere. So some of those inefficiencies are caused by, yes, and I agree with Alan, they are cuts. I don't think we've ever shirked away from saying that the cuts. And the cuts brought upon us because of Tory austerity in this city and of that funding formula. I'd also like to say, we're not going out to the private sector, Richard. You know quite well, you've sat in finance select, you've heard your children's safeguarding and the issues in children's social care is a national crisis. It's very, very difficult because it's been allowed for the private market to flourish. And that's not an issue just for our council, it's an issue for councils up and down the country. We've done a fantastic job. Phil couldn't do any more, I don't think, in trying to recruit foster carers so we don't have to go out to private and third sector organisations. He's here, there and everywhere. But people are going to them. And as fast as we're recruiting and committing finances to train our staff, both in our staffing and in that training, they're going out the other way. I like vice with staffing in children's social care. The rise in agency work is something that this city alone, and I know councillor Cushion is a bit with the fostering service working with other core cities and other organisations, looking at that. And it needs to be done around social web staff. Even outstanding authorities are struggling to recruit staff and that's why those budgets are so high. And it's also one of the reasons we have to clear that we need to have enough reserves. We need to safeguard our most vulnerable, not just by the grants that we give to community organisations and to our councillors via M&amp;F. We have to secure them to make sure we've got well-trained, good staff who can safeguard them, sometimes within their own homes and within residential homes within the city and the region and beyond. So it's a much bigger problem. And I think it's disingenuous to try and say that that's because of mismanagement. Our children's services are improving year on, year on here. And they've struggled, you know, sort of to recruit. But now they are recruiting staff. But as I said, it's a market out there. And I just think that people need to look at what's said in the amendment. This is about the amendment, not about who's better or worse. It doesn't add anything to this budget. Perhaps the stuff around recognising budget formulas, recognising some of the stuff, but it's not saying, you know, how we, how we could have met some of those challenges we have got to make. And it's not just because commissioners are in. Of course, we're being overseen. Year on year since 2010, we've set a legal budget and those budgets have been scrutinised. And I take offence when you talk about people being corrupt over here. I sat on that cabinet, I have not got a corrupt bone in my body. I'm challenging to show where I have been corrupt and where some of my colleagues have been corrupt. Some of those comments last time that I heard about wasn't here at the time to be extremely offensive. We have to work together as officers and elected members to benefit our communities. Our neighbourhood agenda, if that works and going forward, I think it's right for us to look at, we should be listening to what our residents say. And we know what we want. And we know that the collection in particular won't go down well in some wards. In some wards, it doesn't impact as much where the tariffs add. But to me, if that, it's a choice between that and putting some of our banking services and support services, then it's something we need to go for. I ask people to reject the amendment and to support the budget as moved by the mayor.
thank you, councillor. councillor Rothery?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I think the deputy Lord Mayor's got a tenner for your charity because we just did, his mobile phone going off. Can I just go back to the point that councillor Kemp made? I mean, I know we've all discussed it in the chamber tonight. But apart from not being able to contribute to any of our budget meetings, when I was elected in 2006 as Labour councillor, we'd also inherited the debacle of your spending or waste of spend in terms of objective wall funding. When we actually came into this chamber in 2006, we threw our hands in the air and said, "We might as well tear the lights off and go home" because there was just no money in the coffre. So to have a go about how we've turned this city around over the last decade is rich coming from you guys. The issue I want to talk about, and, and, you know, I may know a secret of this because people now be quite vocal in terms of the commissioners' fees that have been paid in this city and in terms of the £10 million that's been ring-fenced. And whilst we all accept that we might need some advice and assistance, I think that it's absolutely obscene at a time where we've got children going to school on empty stomachs, that we've got commissioners not only coming in to a fee that their £10 million be ring-fenced, but after agreeing to do the work for a set fee, then coming back and saying, "Well, actually, you could like double that. I mean, like a backdated to July." Absolutely disgraceful. In terms of best value, I suggest that they do a piece of best value on themselves and how they function within this city. Also, there is no legal requirement to have a £30 million set of reserves. £20 million is more than adequate. That's why Leeds have this amount despite it being twice our size. Bristol and Sheffield have less than £20 million set. We add a cost of services cuts and charges to green waste. Want to waste £10 million to reserve?